Welcome to the Hampden Town Council FY17 Budget Workshop Session for Monday, May 23. First item is the review of proposed Town Manager FY17 budgets. First item up is Economic Development. Town Manager Jennings.
Before we begin, I just want to give a brief overview, especially for those watching at home, of what to expect from the budget process, where we've been so far and where we expect to go over the next five weeks or so. So the town budget has been broken down into each of the departments, and there have been a series of meetings, of which this is one, to allow the council and the public to dig in, in detail, to typically a few different departments on a specific agenda, try to get related departments together. So tonight, we've got Economic Development, Planning and Assessing, GIS, and Information Technology, and Tax Increment Financing. Tomorrow night, we'll be talking about the capital program, Proposed Capital Program, which is more of a five-year, typically issues that require multi-year investment. That'll be tomorrow at 6:00. Next Tuesday, the 31st, we'll talk about Library, Recreation, Pool, and Reserve Accounts. And to this point, we've talked about the prior departments, and all of those materials are up on the town website in detail. So, once each of those working meetings has gone forward, the council will meet on Monday, June 6th, to look at the overall budget. And at that point, you'll have the results of each of the working sessions, but you'll also have the total bottom line on both revenues and expenses. And I would expect, at that point, the council will may, and certainly it's well within your purview, to revisit issues from earlier discussions. So I know not all of the meetings have been televised, and going forward, they will be televised. And so this will allow both the council and the public at the June 6th meeting to revisit anything that's been discussed so far. On the 6th, it's anticipated that the council will refer its proposed budget to public hearing, which is anticipated for Monday, June 20th. So with that preface, I'll get into the specifics of what's before you tonight, and we'll start with Economic Development. In my little background, back in about a year, up to about a year and a half ago, or a little bit less, the town had a full-time planner and a full-time Economic Development Director. The former town manager made a change last April or early May to reduce the hours of the planner, so we had basically a half-time planner and a full-time Economic Development Director. The planner, after a fairly short period of time, got a different job, a full-time job, and left the community, so that we then had one individual on paper overseeing both departments. And for the, at the time, it was anticipated that would be evaluated to see how that's working. And since I've been here in August, I've been looking at that closely, both personally, talking with staff, talking with members of the development community and the public, and talking with members of the council. And I am proposing, in my FY17 budget, a change to the organizational structure. I am proposing that the town fund a full-time planner position, not fund the Economic Development Director position. I don't feel that we have the budget room for two full-time professionals, but I want to be clear in my proposal, my intent is not to abandon the economic development function. I think there's, I think it was always going to be difficult for a single individual to put in the amount of time that would be justified in both areas. It's my opinion, certainly rebuttable by the council, but it's my opinion that if you have one or the other, a full-time planner, you can get a planner that specializes in economic development, and I think that would serve the community well. So you see that in the Proposed Economic Development Budget. It's reflected in a significant decrease in the proposed budget amount. The FY16 budget was approved at $111,575, and with the proposed not funding of that full-time position, the proposed budget I've brought forward is just $4,000. In addition to the staff reduction, we had carried in the current budget $3,500, which has been spent toward the sponsorship of the fact book issued by MainBiz. That is a statewide publication, and I do recognize some value in that. Whether it's worth $3,500, I don't feel that it is, but again, that's up to the council. I would note that Hampden is the only municipality that has supported that sponsorship. The second proposed reduction is in the Training and Travel Budget, from $3,000 in the current fiscal year to $1,750, and that's reflective of reduced staffing. And then in the Legal Budget, in the current year, it's budgeted at $7,000. I've proposed it zero, but as you'll recall from the Budget Meeting on Administration, that $7,000 is simply relocated to the Administration Budget. So the overall proposed legal budget is level funded from FY16.
Any questions?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, since we've done away with the Economic Development Director and that whole position, that why would we have anything for Training and Travel? Why wouldn't we just call that zero and put in under the planner if he needs it to put it under him?
That's certainly an option if he or she needs that resource. I did carry something, just because whether it is the planner, whether it is other staff within that department, the idea was to preserve some training and travel budget dedicated for Economic Development specifically. There's also, but I mean, I totally follow the rationale. I would have no objection to that. But I would suggest, if it's eliminated, that some proportional increase to the planning, training, travel budget would be warranted, in my opinion.
Council McAvoy?
Yeah, on the advertising line, I'd do away with all of it. Discover Maine is a Penobscot edition, Bangor Chamber, MainBiz. It's all local. I find it hard to believe that nobody knows that Hampden, Maine exists in Penobscot County. What do we advertise? I mean, what? You know? So, I'd just get rid of the whole thing.
No? Any other discussion?
Are you removing it, or?
Not until there's a motion. I'm just waiting to see if there's more discussion. Derry, you want to make that a motion?
Well, I'd make a motion that we zero out the whole proposed budget for the Economic Development Department, go from $4,000 to zero. That's my motion.
Any second? Seeing none, then, motion failed. Any other discussions on Economic Development? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is GIS, Information Technology.
We are joined tonight by Kyle Severance, the Director. So Kyle, did you want to speak to the proposed budget?
If I can answer any questions if anyone has any.
I would, no, just for those watching from home, so the, let's see, proposed budget for, let's see, for FY16, or the approved budget, I should say, was $106,423. The proposed budget for FY17 is $107,758. That breaks down to proposed 2% change within personnel, and that includes all personnel items. A lot of that's actually driven by health insurance, which we're budgeting 5% increase, and a .1% increase in non-personnel expenses. Year-to-date spending for this department is 87.8%, and at the time that was done, which was last week, we were 87.7 through the year. So we're exactly right on track with what was budgeted in the current year.
Any questions? Council Marble?
I would just ask Kyle to comment on three lines in a row: equipment replacement, maintenance, and services, because it feels to me intuitively that you've made some changes that have resulted in maybe lack of a need of a hardware replacement, but we need better software, or whatever. If you could just explain what's going on in those three numbers, because there's some cost savings there, I think.
There are a few cost savings. With the equipment replacement, they used to all get lumped in to 2001. I broke that out into three categories. So equipment replacement, I changed to just hardware replacement and hardware replacement assistance, which is more of like the meat and potatoes, IT, like the things that I'm not able to do. I have to contract certain services out. So that's in hardware replacement. And then there's equipment maintenance, and that categorically is all software and licensing costs. So that's, you know, your antivirus, that's all, you know, the Microsoft licenses, everything that goes for the computers, that's software-related, nothing that's actual tangible hardware. And then the last part of it's equipment services, so that's all contracts and leases. So that's our, all of our copier leases, copiers and printers, and as well as computer leases, which I'm on track to do. We have two leases on computers that are running out. One ran out last year, and the next one is running out this year. One has like 10 computers, the other has nine for like the mission-critical, full-time employee computers. So I'm looking at doing a new lease to keep, you know, that within the current budget. So the, since those leases are four and five years old, that's about the end of life for a computer, so I'm looking at upgrading approximately 10 computers for full-time employees this year. So I've been keeping track of the, you know, the troublemakers and on an as-needed basis for what the staff needs. So throughout the year, I'm going to be looking at doing 10 computer replacements, right around the same lease price as the one that just ended.
Counselors Royce?
So is it cheaper for us to go buy with lease, leasing, or buying it outright?
Leasing makes a lot more sense for the way it's handled, rather than purchasing outright. It's cheaper, first of all. Do everything through a CDWG. It's a government contract that's through the national joint powers, so it's, I get some really nice discounts for understate and local government contracts, and one of the benefits there is doing leases, because it's a lot easier to control budget-wise when you have something that's, you know, you can pay right up front, and then, you know, that's what you need for the year, that's all set. And then, you know, that lease runs out at four years, and then up, now we're going to be looking at preventative maintenance, basically replacing those computers, so you don't have one that's going to go down and cause more, you know, the catastrophic loss that's built into the hardware replacement budget.
The other question, did any of the staff have laptops?
Yeah, quite a few of the staff have laptops, and I'm looking at moving some of them over to desktop computers, because they don't really take the desktops. So I repurpose those. So the computers that get swapped out with those lease contracts, you buy them out. After the lease ends, it's just a dollar, and then you own all those computers, so I, you know, I just look at repurposing those.
Angus, I take it you have a laptop, correct? Do you?
Now, are the laptops primarily in public safety?
Primarily.
Well, my question is, you spend a lot of time in here on the weekends and everything else. Would it be better for you to be able to do that from home? I'm just trying to make your job easier. I know, I see your vehicle out here, you're here a lot. To me, I mean, the convenience of a laptop is...
In former workplaces, I've had a lot of luck with a docking laptop, so you have really just one workstation, but it docks to your screen. I don't know if, on the next upgrade cycle, if that's an option, but I certainly wouldn't object to that. I do have, I mean, I do do some work from my home computer, which I know is not best practices, so.
What some of the other staff does, like myself, I remote in, so I use, I have three GoToMyPC licenses for staff. So rather, I don't have a computer that I use. If I'm at home, I remote into the computer, my work computer, which then I can securely remote into the servers and do maintenance from home. Some of the staff that live farther away, like Newburg, and Kelly lives pretty far away too, so let's say a snow day happens, they can remote into their, and still do, conduct business.
Is Angus, is your PC on, or is his computer on that?
Not the GoToMyPC. I can add it in there. It's a lot cheaper for $99 a year for the GoToMyPC license than it would be for a whole computer, but it's an option.
I'm just thinking work balance, you know, it'd be nice to, your child goes to bed, and you can sit down and log in and finish work, and I think it should be considered, so.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
The next item up tonight is the Assessor Planning Position. Joe?
All right, in the Planning Assessing, where you saw the significant reduction in the Economic Development, you see a portion of that offset by a proposed increase in the Planning and Assessing, where the proposal is to bring the planner back under that umbrella. So what you see in, you had an approved FY16 budget of $178,594, and a proposed FY17 budget of $269,782. That's a proposed increase of 63% in the personnel arena, driven by, obviously, the addition of one FTE, with somewhat, partially offset by a proposed decrease of 16% in the non-personnel expenses. And year-to-date, this department is 83.4% spent, and again, at the time that was calculated, it was 87.7, so right in the ballpark of what was expected at last year's budget. So to walk through some of the specific line items, the most significant change is bringing the planner back under this umbrella, so that drives the salary line, as well as the other compensation lines, you know, retirement, healthcare, and so forth. Scanning and indexing, we've budgeted typically $3,000 a year. We have a part-time worker that we pay $10 an hour. The department head proposal was $5,200. I've supported an increase, but only to $4,200. I think that money is very well-spent, and either Kyle or Kelly, our assessor, could speak to what's done. But basically, in my experience, for a town this size, we're way ahead of what I would have expected, and where I think a lot of communities are in terms of digitizing records, and that provides a real public benefit to citizens who can access all of those through our online GIS. All of those scanned documents are indexed by parcel, so you can try it out at home, pull up your home address, or any address in town, you can pull up the permits that were issued, and it's kind of neat. It's also, I think, in my experience, very helpful to realtors and developers, especially once they know it's there. I think we can do a better job of getting the word out, but in other communities I've worked in, it's certainly a tool that people use. Let's see, the, another change is in the software contracts. We're proposing a decrease of $6,025, down to $4,725, and that was on the advice of Kyle, because of, in the current year, there's a one-time sketching component in Trio, which relates to the assessing function, and that was a one-time purchase, so that's reflected in this year's budget. And under zoning, we had budgeted in the current year $4,800, primarily for public hearing costs, notices, plan reviews. I've proposed a decrease to $3,200 for really two reasons. One, when I started, more costs associated with applicants' public hearing notices were being borne by the public than is happening now. We've done a much better job of allocating those costs to the applicant, so that public hearing notices and the butters' notices are borne by the applicant wherever possible, and there have been some amendments to the fee ordinance to ensure that more, basically, we'd like to get to where any applicant that's triggering the need for public hearing bears those costs, rather than taxpayer-funded. We have kept a legal budget, or I have proposed to keep a legal budget in this department in contrast to Economic Development, because there are, on a fairly routine basis, dedicated legal costs that can be easily assigned to either Planning or Assessing, so that helps from an accounting standpoint.
Council Marble?
A couple. I don't know if we got clear for you in the previous discussion under Economic Development, but I think we were heading in the direction of saying those line items could be moved into this department. So I'm just, I'm basically asking, is that where you would go next? The additional legal, things like that?
I would have no objection for that. I think you're talking primarily about Training and Travel, and then the Advertising Budget.
Yep. And I think, because it's come up in public, I'm not asking you to justify anything, because I know it's clear, and we've talked about this, and I agree with you. But I think it might help to people just chiming into this one more time, to talk about maybe some of the specific Economic Development work that a planner would be capable of doing while still meeting the increased obligations of Planning?
Sure. So I'll start with some of the planning functions, and then circle back. So there are a number of, you know, people often think of the planner as kind of the primary permitting hand-holder, if you will. It's certainly an important function. There's recurring work there that's driven by how much development activity there is, but I think having a point of contact who really understands the zoning is extremely helpful to applicants, and I think will be a plus. But there's other areas, in particular Stormwater Management, which really has a lot of relationship to land use because of impervious surface and so forth, and the former planner had contributed a significant amount of time to that work, and that's something that, right now, we have a thin team. And as you know, with the mandates that we're under from DEP, it's important that we have a strong team at Stormwater. There's, I see a number of initiatives that have been talked about for a number of years, whether to do with the riverfront, or the Coldbrook Road area, or the town center, where I think, you know, a good planner, in addition to their permitting function, will really be able to facilitate a community process, to really establish a physical vision of what could happen there, that's grounded in a real understanding of the market and the economy, and what could actually work. And I think having that skill set will be a real plus. The, in terms of the Economic Development value that that function can provide, is having a professional who really knows what they're marketing, meaning they know the zoning, they know both substantively setbacks and lot sizes and building heights and these kinds of things that most, I mean, really, I think every investor, unless they've done their own homework, is going to be looking for that advice. That's important. They can also identify the deficiencies in our zoning, which, full disclosure, I'm a trained planner, there's many deficiencies in our zoning. So I think, you know, someone who can be very proactive about getting our zoning to where it really does facilitate and encourage the kind of development that we're talking about would be a real plus. And I think on marketing, I think knowing what we have to market, I think, is very important, because I definitely think there are opportunities for the town of Hampden in Economic Development, but you need, you need a vision, but you also need a real understanding of both what's allowed and where, and subject to what criteria, but also the process. And I think that, and just as one quick example, in evaluating how things have been working in kind of the back of the building, one of the concerns I've had is customer service, and it's not because of the individuals there. It's actually, in my opinion, partly because of the seating configuration. We have an empty office behind Rosemary's desk, so if Rosemary happens to be out, or if she's busy with another customer tied up on the phone, the second line of response has either been Kyle or Kelly, and if you know the physical layout, Kyle's kind of right there, but he's, he's got a job that relies on kind of a lot of concentration, and if he's constantly getting pulled away, that can undermine what he's trying to do. And Kelly's not really right there. It's not that easy to hear if someone's there. So part of what I would propose, in addition to the shift on the org chart, is to actually seat the planner in the planner's office, so that there's really a second line of response, a line of sight between the public and the planner. And in former town halls I've worked in, that's been the dynamic, and the planner is on the front lines with the public, and I think that's a very positive shift.
Thank you for that, and I'm assuming that's going to be as helpful to the public as it is to us. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to Item D, which would be Tax Increment Financing.
All right, so as you'll recall, the, there was a budgeting glitch in FY16. Fortunately, it was not nearly as disruptive as it could have been, because of the work of our assessor, Kelly Carter. What happened is, in FY15, the town approved the Emeritif, and prior to FY15, the town had budgeted typically about $20,000 a year for TIF expenses, and that budgeted amount needs to cover both any TIF funding to be used toward any public purpose, but also has to cover the payment back to the property taxpayer of any credit enhancement agreement. And the $20,000 budgeted amount had worked fine for years. It was a round number. It was adequate to cover the expenses. Because of the scale of the Emeritif and the amount of the credit enhancement agreement payment, what we found, and fairly early in my time here, was that the stated budget for FY16 at $20,000 was just nowhere near adequate to cover the obligations back to the taxpayers. Fortunately, Kelly, in her work, in her reporting to Department of Revenue, which sets the tax rate and all of the valuations and all of that, there's a reporting line for TIF, and she had correctly reported it to the state. What that means is that the tax rate in the current year was appropriately set. It took into account the correct number, but if you look back to what was actually voted a year ago, it was $20,000. So it was really almost like an internal Scrivener's error, a significant one, to say the least, but the underlying reporting was correct. So the reason, what you see is FY15 adopted of $20,000, FY16 amended of $189,148, and those amendment, that amendment was approved.
And those amendment, that amendment was approved earlier this year. That dollar amount, as I said, that covers both the payments back to the original taxpayers, which, to use round numbers, is about 50%. And it also, the balance of that is put into a TIF account, which is available with the approval of the council for TIF-eligible purposes. So, because of increased valuations in those TIF districts, the proposed FY '17 budget is 288,512.50. And that's based on the assessor's estimate of what the assessed values will be in 2017, and based on the terms of each TIF agreement, what share of that incremental revenue is due back to the taxpayer versus available for public use in a TIF account. So, of the amounts that you see, the first three line items, TIF, University Club Credit Enhancement Agreement, CEA stands for Credit Enhancement Agreement, TIF, Ameri-Credit Enhancement Agreement, those, and then the TIF Hack Hampden, those amounts, which total about 150,000, are sent, we receive the second property tax bill, and then we send a check back to the taxpayer in those amounts. So, of the 288 proposed budget, about 150 goes back to the tax, the original taxpayer. The balance, which is just short of 140,000, if this is approved, would be available for allocation to eligible TIF expenses. And just under 3,000 of that comes from the University Club TIF, and the overwhelming majority of those funds, 135,880 results from the Ameri-TIF. And so, I've included in your packet the complete Ameri-TIF, as well as a summary sheet, which talks about what the eligible uses are. Some of those are within the TIF district, some of those are across the community. So, if this is approved, there's really, that gives the option to put those TIF funds toward any of those eligible uses. And as we've talked about at prior meetings, it would be an option to use some of those funds to offset costs that would otherwise be within the general fund. So, that's something I at least wanted to introduce for discussion tonight. And I think, as I started the meeting by saying, when we see the overall bottom-line budget, you know, there may be an interest to revisit costs, and it may be that we could offset operating costs with TIF revenues.
Questions, Counsel McAvoy?
What's the name of the company out there by the railroad tracks? The paper company?
Dennis Paper.
Dennis Paper? Don't they have a TIF? Which one is in here?
University Club.
Oh, excuse me.
They call themselves the University Club.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I don't have enough knowledge tonight to be specific about it, but I would support applying TIF funds within TIF expenditures that are appropriate, and not risk taking hits on things like further decrease in municipal revenue sharing, or an increase in our share of county tax or RSU expenditures. And I think there may be an opportunity, as the planning department evolves, and we start visioning what we want for Hampden in a more concrete way, that some of these funds would support utilization of tools, surveys, maybe staff time to help that all happen. So, I'm just saying, I'm in favor of keeping the sheltered amount sheltered, dedicating it to appropriately related activities, both within and without the district, as allowed by the agreement.
Counsel McAvoy?
Could I ask our assessor a couple of questions?
I don't know why not.
Okay. The?
Kelly, if you would just come up here so that, and the microphone.
Now, I understand that the benefit is for a TIF, is that we capture whatever this amount is, is taken out of whatever calculations the state uses as far as school reimbursement and, you know, other things.
Municipal revenue sharing, state aid to education.
So, there's significant benefit supposedly to that. The, our assessed value right now, we are at, what, approximately 100% of what?
That's our certified sale value to assessed value.
Okay.
We certify 100. We were at 98%.
Okay. And the state requirement is that we be, what, at 80% or better?
At least 70%.
Okay. So, if we were at 70% of what we are today, the state would have no problem with that, correct? I mean?
All of our exemptions would be reduced to 70% of the whole, and they would reflect the difference in value in our state valuation number. They would create that difference, and that would be used to calculate our revenue sharing and our state aid to education number, whether we were assessing it or not.
So, they would recalculate it?
Correct.
They would impute up to 100%?
Correct.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, so, with that, I guess if we don't have, Counsel Royce?
I brought up the purchase of a docking station and a laptop. Is, do I need to make a motion on that, or is that something that Kyle can work? Because I'm sure yours, like, yours is still within, you know, good working order, and everything can be reallocated, so that that could happen. Do you need a, so I don't think there'd be any effect on the budget, other than?
I don't think there would be any effect on the budget.
All right. We also have, as you know, an IT reserve account that has a healthy balance in it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, no other questions? So, that will end it for tonight. Tomorrow night will be 6 o'clock Capitol Program. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and we'll see you tomorrow night.